And I see that most of you have set forward. We're not gonna, we do not have a sound system of any kind this evening. It was not present here in the building. We do have plenty of seats up front. So anybody who has trouble hearing, please just move up toward the front if you need to. If you need to move a chair around further, please do that. We will try to speak up so you can hear us. If you cannot, just say something and we'll try to make sure that you can. And yet in return, if you guys are speaking, we would appreciate the same. Okay, we're running a few minutes behind here tonight, so we're gonna go ahead and get started. The monthly meeting of the San Carlos Estates Water Control District is called before at six, well, it's six, uh, that's 6:10. Anybody got their check time?
Well, that clock says 6:05.
It's 6:01 PM on April 17th on 2023. A forum of two is present. Okay. Roll call. Chairman Jim Bratcher, Supervisor John Solucci, Manager Audrey Mederos, is that correct? Secretary Treasurer Chris Lawson, Attorney Richard Prankl, Engineer Ron Eddenfield, along with, let's see, how many people do we have out here tonight? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight?
Eight.
Along with eight guests and residents, landowners. I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. We always enjoy having you. For those of you who do not know, Audrey.
Mederos.
Mederos. That was just a great thing, you know? The, is our new manager for the San Carlos Estates Water Control District. And so, any of you who need to talk to her or whatever, feel free to call her night and day and preferably after midnight.
You will call him first.
Yes, there you go. Appreciate that.
It's not a point. So personally, we're glad to have her aboard. It's been quite a while since we've had an actual manager. So now we've got a separation of the two jobs of the manager and Secretary Treasurer's position. We will be putting together job, actual job descriptions. Part of that's gonna be, we have, or the statutes gives us guidelines for that, which we will use initially, and then we'll scope them and shape them as we need. Okay, Ron Eddenfield, let's hear your report, please.
All right, sir. Thank you. That's the last meeting. We have hidden our notes. There we are. We have seventeen open comments that we're currently tracking. Various stages in review. We have two new applications that we passed the checks along to Ms. Lawson and we'll have her letter transmitted in the email tomorrow. We finalized six driveway, driveway applications, and we conducted some 26 inspections since our last report. On other items, a few things besides just driveways. Morse to Pew has completed their waterfall analysis. It has been submitted to county and to the FPT. I transmitted a copy of that earlier this afternoon to Chris.
If you guys cannot, excuse me for a minute. If you guys cannot hear for some reason, you're welcome to pull your chairs around. And we do not have a sound system this evening.
Okay, thank you.
If I need to speak a little louder, just say, say hey.
Just fast. Hmm? Just fast.
Just that. Then from Georgia. I was saying that we had transmitted an electronic copy of the full report. It's a six-part report. It was so, it has 32 megabytes as a zip file. Chris, was that able to come through or did you have a chance?
The last time I looked at the email today, I had not received it. So you might need to.
It may be too big, so I may need to break it down for you. We will get that squared away so that Chris has that in her files. Last week, we conducted a requisite site inspection with FEMA to look at some eight projects that we have listed with them as part of our damage inventory. Four of the eight were deemed to be viable where there was documentable damage. And so they will now move further on into the FEMA process for seeking either partial or complete reimbursement. I would note that two of the projects were combined, so it's actually three that will be moving forward. The reality is four of the original, they just combined two of them. So our four became three, and we'll be moving those three forward through the process.
Ron, of the eight, four they're gonna consider?
The three slash four that they'll consider, first is the Mariah Weir, looking at funding for repairs that we're, it also will be eligible through the state, through a mitigative program they have for mitigation, where we can actually get funds above and beyond the damage funds. The damage would be costs to just simply repair or replace in space. There's mitigation dollars and we'll be pursuing to do some upgrades to that structure. But we don't, Jim's in a hurry, so we won't get into much detail on that. But the Mariah Weir is one. The other was the sedimentation at the strike lane culverts at railroad tracks, getting those cleaned out. And then the third and fourth one was erosion and sediment in the, primarily the northern canal system. So they documented several annual feet of where we've had erosion that has washed sediment into the canal system, and they'll have fun to get that material removed from the canal and restored to the bank and getting the bank restored to the condition it's supposed to be in. Let's see. We're meeting again this Friday with the project manager from FEMA, and we'll get those things wrapped up and continue.
That's at nine o'clock in this building?
It's nine o'clock here. Get that information from the site inspection. Their reports will be done, the mitigation reports will be done, and we'll have that all on the table, I presume, come Friday with our project manager. Additionally, we had a project for road inspection where we had damage to the pavement. We did not do that inspection during this round. We actually felt inappropriate to save a few items for a second site inspection. We didn't want to fill up their whole day. So we'll be looking at the road issues, and we will probably try to bring in a few other things that are appropriate to bring into that second site inspection. So we'll be meeting again on Friday to talk about that. We've also, we have a scheduled MS4, initially separate storm sewer system, as part of our NPDS permanent inspection with Lee County and the Florida Department of Environmental Protection on May 2nd or 3rd?
A 3rd.
3rd, sorry, the 3rd. 22nd and the 4th. On May 3rd, it'll be at nine o'clock. We'll rendezvous here with county and state staff and essentially go on a tour of the district, looking at our structures, culverts, and canal system. Totally separate from what FEMA's been doing. This is the other side of government, the state government and the federal government. So if anybody's wondering why we didn't all do it at one time, I suppose it's multiple governments involved. So we'll be doing that May 2nd. We did receive two bids for cleaning up the roadside swales between Tuck and Visi B, and I'll be getting with the chairman on that as he has time available. The, let's try to think of my head, sir.
Okay, one quick question. Morse to Pew, they're done now for their water assessing.
I believe they would be.
So from this point forward, it's gonna be REMC's taking this one. So is it done again this year in 2023 or is it next year?
It'll be done, it's done annually. We provide updates.
So they're doing one that was 2022, complete 2023? So you're gonna start one this year, do it next year?
It'll be due sometime this fall.
But you're doing it now, you're out. Okay, one other thing that we had was we had a meeting out of the EOC again, applying for another grant. Mr. Eddenfield and I attended that meeting along with.
Dale.
Pardon?
Dale.
Peter.
Peter.
Oh, yeah.
And so we attended that meeting, and that's moving forward also. And just so you all know, this board sits here representing this, our neighborhood and our subdivision. You guys are landowners out here. Anybody who wants to sit down on a computer and go through grants and funding through the state of Florida and any other organizations, you're welcome to do that and assist us. If you only move forward with finding a location of some money that's out there that we can apply for, we'll do the applications if we need to do it. But just letting you know, if you've got some spare time and you want to sit on a computer and try to find some of these things, there's a lot of money out there from the state of Florida and the governor's office for water control districts. And because the fact that the way the procedure has been done, we don't have a way, we, the only way we can do projects is to increase tax monies to do that. There was no real bank account set back with millions of dollars in it to take care of future things that we have to contend with, such as the ditches getting full of silt. The, unfortunately, we ended up in a situation where apparently our culvert pipes were supposed to be being cleaned and they hadn't been cleaned. I don't know, I don't have any facts to go by that, except for in one year where I checked them myself and found out none had been cleaned after we had been told they had been cleaned. Residents out here have informed me and told me that when theirs was supposed to be clean in the past, they hadn't been. I never saw it, I can't contest to that in any way. But it sort of put us behind the eight ball, and the way to get out of this without the residents of the small community having to someday pick up the tab, this isn't something we decide. It's something that's controlled by the state of Florida and managed by, what organization actually manages that, Ron? Our Water Control District.
Pardon?
What, what actual agency controls our water control district? Is it DDP or Division?
We're governed by multiple agencies. The DDP oversees our stormwater NPDS.
Anyway, without getting into real specifics of that, we don't have the last say on it. They, they will come in and they will fine us if we're not keeping up with the water control and water qualities as they have determined that we should. So that's not something that this board, no matter who sits on it, determines. Good evening, Steve.
Hey, how are you doing?
We do not have a sound system, so if you find a place in the back and can't hear us, you may need to move forward. So anyway, anybody who wants to help, can. All right. Like I said, we had a meeting out of the Emergency Operations Center in Lee County on March 28th. And we're continuing the weekly meetings that we have every week that I attend, Ron attends, and Peter attends with Dale from FEMA every week here at this building.
We have four projects to perform with the HNGP.
If you'd like to do that real quickly, go ahead.
Just, just real quickly, the four projects that we advanced through the county's HNGP program were dredging the canals all 5.5 miles, a redesign of the filter marshes to include stormwater sediment pond and frequent vegetation, land acquisition, and replacement of the strike lane culverts with box corners. So those are the four projects we'll put on the table that we've received.
Okay, thank you. Now, because we do have our new manager and this is her first meeting, I'm going to give her a spot right now following my report. Make it brief.
Yes, I make it brief. So my name is Audrey Mederos. I am a resident of San Carlos Estates. I wanted to do this job, and I have thus followed the requirements by the board to get my qualification in stormwater management inspection. And I've already cased the perimeter with some work that had been done by Michael, and I've been out to meet with some of the board members. It's going to be an ongoing process. I'm not going to be having everything all at once, but we'll be working, I will be working with every member on this board periodically and consistently to make sure that I do the best for this community. So if you ever see me out in my buggy, please say hi and have conversation with me. I'm open to, to suggestions in what we have here, and thank you.
Okay.
Welcome.
Attorney's report, or treasurer's report.
Are you, are you done, are you done your report then?
I'm never done. Go ahead.
All right. If you will go to the April 30th reports. We did not have the March 31 bank statement, so that will be brought up, brought to the next meeting. I'm still lacking the Bank of America statements. As of Friday, we have received 595, I'm sorry, $561,490 of general maintenance tax revenue. We have outstanding, yet to receive, $34,162. We are at about 94% of receipts. In the CIP Phase 1, we have received $533,814 of tax revenues, and we're at 95% of receipts with $28,511 remaining outstanding. Last year at this time, we were at 90% for both. So we, our actual receipts are a little higher this year than they were last year, year-to-date. So I thought that was interesting and good to know. I did send the unpaid tax revenues for the CIP to Bank of America. Per our loan covenants, we have to report to them by April 15th of what is outstanding, and they have received that and acknowledged that we are in compliance with the loan covenants based on that information, and we are in good standing. Other income that we've received year-to-date is on $22,130, which is the Brooks and gate receipts, gate remote receipts. So that's our income. And as far as our bank accounts, so if anybody's interested in knowing where we stand in the bank accounts, we have right now at, in the general maintenance checking account, $421,745. And we have in the CIP Phase 1, $287,528. Last year at this time, we only had in our general maintenance, $247,424. That is the large, the difference is largely because, one, we have not done some of the normal maintenance that we normally would have done by now, which is the swale cleaning, or canal cleaning, and the tree trimming along the peripheral roads in February, January and February. And we also budgeted for some additional work on the peripheral roads for cleaning them up and trimming them back as a drainage project and some other road projects. So that's why we have so much money that, this year, that, than we had last year at this time. And I was going to suggest to the board that unless there was expenses that we knew that we would be paying in the next four to six months, that we actually move some of that money to Florida Prime so that we could get some interest on that money. But I don't know the timing of the projects that you're considering at this point in time.
Right, right now, it was one of the things I wanted to discuss, was that Hurricane Ian changed everything. So the fact of planning sort of went out the door, especially as to things that we had planned last year, because everything that we're doing is match, somewhat matching grant money in some fashion or another, meaning that we get 50%, 75% in most cases. If we don't have a portion to match what we get from the state or from the county or from other agencies, then we can't receive that money. And so we need to sort of have money in our pockets to be able to put together with their money to receive three, three quarters of what we might spend on something. So we've been a little reluctant to move forward with cleaning projects and things that, now we've done the Hurricane Ian cleanup, which part of that was what we would have done anyway. But if you go around our neighborhood, you'll see some additional growth going on right now, maybe some berry bushes that are growing over into the tree, up into the ditch areas and things that we would have already hired somebody to have cleaned those areas. But there are also lots, at the rate the building's going on out here, somebody's gonna buy the lot and clean it anyway very shortly. So it's like, why throw the money at it and turn around and have that happen? So if we park the money for a short period of time, even if we go through the rainy season to the fall, it's, it's probably the better thing to do.
So my suggestion would be to move maybe $150,000 and for y'all to consider, and then we can talk about that at the next meeting, make a decision.
There's one question, Chris. What percent, what, of the four something that's sitting there, what would have been normally spent if we followed the schedule? Half of that?
The 40,000 plus, plus three, 43 to 45,000 would have been spent for the canal cleaning, the tree trimming, and the spraying of the herbicides. So around 50,000.
50,000. And there's four something in it now.
Right. And we would do another 50,000, 45,000 in August.
So call it 100,000 would have been spent anyway.
Right.
So why are you recommending 150?
Because that would leave us with 100. So I have 174,000 is the difference between what we have now versus what we had last year. I was suggesting 150, knowing that you were thinking of doing some projects, and as we received additional monies, then move more if we needed to, if we had excess.
Now, if, if we moved the money into that account, though, we can choose to take it out.
I can get, I can get it in a day.
Why don't we, how much can we put in there and still pay our bills? And as long as, in some interest, it's better than zero.
Well, if we go to what we had last year, which was 247, that would leave us with 50,000 anticipated for August that we may or may not need. So we could move 175 easily.
You want to move 175? I mean, we pull it out anytime we want it anyway, so.
Yeah, all right, I'll make a motion to move 175. Will it be done this week?
I didn't bring a check, but I can, I can come out. Yeah, I can go around with a check. The interest that I believe was being paid at Prime is, I think, I do have that statement here. Just so everybody would know the difference. Right now, we're not earning any interest on it, and if we move it to Prime, at the last, at March, their interest was 4.84%. So it's a significant amount of money that we could be earning for a period of time.
If we remove that.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, you can move it out of the account, all right. Is there a penalty to move it?
No.
And it doesn't affect our covenants either, correct?
No. We're talking general maintenance funds only.
So just want to be sure. Okay, I make that motion, we move 175,000 under the prime.
Give him seconds, the motion carries.
Yep.
Okay. All right, on to expenses. Our administration, we are still under budget on administration, largely because of the delay in hiring Audrey. So that is something that's more than 10% under budget. We are way, our bank fees is over budget because we did not anticipate Bank of America's analysis service fees increases. They basically doubled last year, and so we're, so we're a little over that. Once we get done with the CIP Phase 1, we can get out of the account analysis program, and then that's gonna save us some money long-term. The other area that where we are under budget over 10% is drainage, which we are right now annualized 75,000 under budget, and that's because we haven't done any of those projects that we anticipated. The gate, we had budgeted $2,000. We've only spent $201, and that's largely because we got a brand-new gate, even though someone did run over it yesterday.
But do, but do remember, this money is all anticipated in the next couple of years of being returned from the FEMA program.
Yeah, I'll get to that in a second. The legal is under budgeted right now because we have not received any recent billings from our attorney. And then miscellaneous is a little over budget because of, again, what we do is the general maintenance account reimburses CIP account for its share of the account analysis statement fees, for the bank fees. So we move that money back over to the CIP, and because of the, and then increases, we under budgeted for that. And then roads is under budgeted because we didn't do the projects that we anticipated so far. We have spent for Hurricane Ian expenditures, if you recall, we moved 200,000 back in October, November from the Florida Prime account, our reserve funds, to the general maintenance funds to cover anticipated expenses that Ian caused. So we have spent 194,260 of those dollars so far. And so our total right now left of that 200, original 200,000 is $5,740. Where those Ian expenses are sitting is in drainage, we spent, have spent, let's see if I have that, 153,165. That was the drainage cleanup and the fence repair. The gate was 11,175, and that was the replacement of the gate. And then for the roadways, which was the replacing of the signage, we have spent, roads, 11,931. And then for miscellaneous expenses, which was check copies for FEMA, and then there was another $100, we spent 385. So that's where the Hurricane Ian money has been spent so far.
Chris, that's all direct expenses. What's the cost associated with Ron and Richard's time supporting the FEMA?
Well, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't tell you the engineering cost. Engineering cost has been 17,604.
And that's part of the 194.
That's part of the 194. I don't have anything for the attorney because I don't have any bills. So we could find ourselves, once we receive this billing, that we have fully exhausted that.
Isn't Richard making so much money here? This is pro bono for him, for tax relief?
Sure, why not make a donation?
Does anybody have any questions about the finances?
Yeah, we had a couple of meetings earlier, we were talking about the money that was mispaid to pay off one of the CIP.
That's on the agenda for later in the meeting, so we're gonna talk about that. Any other questions?
How many more years could we have with one?
For the CIP? We're gonna pay it off next year.
This year.
All right, good.
And your assessment, what, your assessment will be less than it was last year?
Okay, you done, Chris?
I'm done.
Okay. We need to approve longer? No.
Not yet.
Okay, attorney's report.
Yes, sir, I have comments on agenda items. I'll take questions from the board. I'm done.
Okay. Why, is it just 50 questions when we get down to them?
Yes, sir, that's fine with me.
Okay, any amendments to the meeting's agenda?
Do we need to make a motion?
Sort of an odd place for this, seeing as how I already made a modification when I put Audrey in. So passing by that, anything else? John? Okay.
Is that a slot on agenda item?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. We do have an amendment to the meeting agenda. That is to approve the transfer of 175,000 to Florida Prime. That's, that has to officially be done in our business agenda. So yes, we need to amend the agenda to add that item. So if you could do that by board action, I would appreciate it.
Okay, put a motion on the floor to amend the agenda, the meeting agenda, to include transfer of funds to Florida Prime, and we'll make that the last item on the list.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay. Okay, moving forward, we've got public input?
Wait, no, we need a second on your motion.
Yes, sir.
Second the motion.
Motion passes.
And Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. And we also confirmed earlier that Supervisor Fanazzo was not here tonight. She's absent with an excused absence.
Correct.
Very good, thank you.
Okay. Public input on anything on the business item agenda, and it's limited to three minutes. And just for future, if there's anything that you're going to have on, as far as public input, if it's really important to you, it's important to us. Please give it to us in writing ahead of time so that we have the opportunity to give you the fair assessment of what you want to ask us about. That way, we can look at it and know what you're talking about before we get to the meeting. So if you would turn that in to Chris, our Secretary Treasurer, it's in some, probably at least a week in advance of the meeting, and that's not an official thing, that's what I'm gonna ask you to do.
Steve, so did you have a specific question for the CIP Phase 2, or Phase 1? Phase 2?
You were saying at one of the meetings, prior, prior to. You were saying at one of the meetings prior to this that we were gonna have to pay back some money. Some of us would have to pay back money that you've made out, somebody paid out of the wrong account.
Okay. All right, so what the discussion that's going to be held tonight is the board's going to discuss what they want to do for that, whether they want to move forward and do that billing back, and what those dollars might be, and how that would happen.
It was taken out of the wrong account. It was taken out of the other account.
It was, it wasn't so much that it was taken out of the wrong account. It was taken out of reserve funds and then used to pay the note off. The problem that resulted is when they failed to continue the tax assessment on the tax rolls. And that's what created the problem. Not that they paid it.
It was paid off on the due assessment.
Because there are people that, all right, so there are people that haven't fully paid their assessment. And so by using our reserve funds, they use the reserve funds instead of collecting the assessment.
Basically using the wrong account, so.
Right.
It was still paid.
I think I can answer pretty quickly.
Okay, if you wanna do that, let's go ahead and do that and move forward.
You wanna do that now, or do you wanna do that at the time?
If I could do it, I'm gonna get down to it.
I'll be glad to do it right then.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for bringing that up, Steve. Anything else concerning the agenda, any items on the agenda that somebody wants to ask about? If not, we're gonna move forward with the agenda. Business agenda items. These items are requiring action, okay.
Yes, sir.
A, meeting minutes approval. Make a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the two meetings, March 20th, and special meeting regarding the interview and hiring process of Audrey.
Okay. Second, motion passes. B, financial report and bank statement approval, 33123. Financial report and 33123 bank statements. 43023 bills and financial report as of 41723.
Make a motion to approve the financial statements as read by Treasurer, Secretary.
Second that, motion carries.
And then we're gonna table the bank statements to next month.
Yeah, correct, correct. We had already talked about that, just assumed it was.
But it has to be part of the motion.
Contracts on canal and perimeter road cleaning, roadway trimming, and culvert cleaning. That's part of, part of the Ian stuff will be taken care of as we have already approved that. And the other items are just basically on hold for the time being.
Yes, sir, that was a continuation from last month's meeting, as I remember, that agenda item.
Have we finalized our detailed scoping analysis for any RFPs for those contracts? I know we've gone back and forth. Are we done that now?
We have.
I had to put on that.
It's not completed yet.
So that's why I really don't wanna deal with that. I'd like to complete that before we do it.
Okay.
The thought was that we would apply that as a contract.
Correct, correct.
So, Mr. Chairman, if you wanna continue that to the next month.
Make a motion to continue.
Make a motion to continue that.
Make a motion to continue it to future meetings.
Jim, you second, right?
I second it, this man, motion carries. Hurricane Ian damage issues, resolution, repairs, FEMA payments. Payments for repairs.
Is any action required by the board this evening related to the Hurricane Ian repairs and/or reimbursement?
There are none.
Then that item can be continued as well.
Also, make a motion if we continue that, as an ongoing project.
Make a motion to continue the Hurricane Ian issues.
I second it, motion carries. E, annual meeting set date and time for annual meeting.
So we have the meeting right now tentatively set up for 9:23. That was the date that everybody agreed to. Was there any, are there any conflicts?
No.
10:00 AM? And Tammy, you were gonna arrange to have it at the church?
And that has been done, so it will be located at the.
What's the name of the?
25300 Burnwood Drive. At the golf store, Wyssen and Turf.
The old tax collector's office. Seems only appropriate to the church to be there.
I'll pay you again.
So that'll be 9:23 at 10:00 AM? And then we'll have the regular meeting following, as we did last year, yes?
Yes, ma'am. So that needs to be approved by a board action, Mr. Chairman.
Make a motion to approve the annual meeting of Saturday, September 23rd, 10:00 AM. Second it, motion carries.
Okay.
And we will be sending a letter out, as we did last year. I wanna, before that gets sent, I'm gonna approve.
Yes, sir. We can talk about that at the next meeting.
CIP Phase Two, review and analysis of outstanding assessment, decide next course of action.
Okay, if you look in your packets, you have a, you have the information that was prepared for last month's meeting. The payoff that was made was $211,058.97 back.
What page would that be on? It's a, it's a charge, right?
It's, it's the, it's right, it's what.
Behind the charge, you've got a lot of pages here.
Just open, take your, take your clip off, Jim.
I like my clip.
Go pass the paper clips. Pass the paper clips.
Oh, we're clear.
Oh, I didn't give you paper clips, I just stapled you together. You're going, not that one.
There's the second paper clip. Another paper clip. Okay, thank you, Chris.
Okay, so we paid in July of 2021, $211,058.97 for the note of that. $24,999.83 was interest. Balance remaining was $186,059. We had planned, I'm sorry, I'm going back. I have to go back, it's been a long time since I did this. The amortization loan interest was 6,194.39. Payoff loan interest was 5,404.58. We had planned, the amortization principal payment was $24,274. We had, through the assessment, planned.
Which column were you in?
Doing the review number two. The additional paydown of $24,999. So that, that revenue that we had was $11,799, blah, blah, blah. The balance remaining was $174,259. So that is what we paid over and above what was needed to be paid. We had 912.855 weighted acres. That was outstanding. If we deduct the $174,000 from that number, the balance that was in the checking account at that time of $1,072.92, that leaves us with $172,786 that was used after we deduct receipts received in 2022 of $437, $437. So if we use the net, 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 the per acre payoff due for unit one is $189.28 per acre. For unit two, it's $113.57 per acre. Unit three is $283.92 per acre. So what that means to people. Is that the payoff, if you figure 189.28 times 1.25, you're looking at about $234. Or if you have two and a half acres, $477 if you're in unit one. Mr. Pringle had some ideas.
So how are you gonna know who did and didn't pay? And how much of the expense is it gonna cost you to find out? How many of us did not pay?
I have, there was no payoffs for Phase Two in 2021. I have the spreadsheet and the tax rolls for 2021 of the CIP assessment that was needed to be paid. So we know the lot numbers, the strap numbers of those that are outstanding.
Already, but we need any research.
Now, what I need to do, and I have a tax, I did get a recent tax roll, is match those strap numbers to names because the names, because properties have sold since then. So we have to match those strap numbers from 2021 to the current tax rolls today for the new owners and any changes that have occurred since 2021. That's the project.
Okay, now I have one little problem with that. We sold a lot since then, but it was all under one strap number. Now we have three lots, but we have two lots instead of three lots. So now you've got another strap number that wasn't there at the time you paid this off.
Right, and, and we have a lot of, we have a lot of.
So I'm gonna be charged to do that lot?
No, no, that, that, that segment follows the ownership.
Even though the strap number was different then than it is now?
Yes, yes. We have, we have every ta, every year, we have people combining lots, uncombining lots, and we have to go back and re-figure all that out. So we would be able to know, because on our current roll, we would have a tax lot strap that we didn't have on the 2021 roll. And we would have to reconcile those differences because your strap this year would be two and a half.
Right.
And back then, it was whatever it was.
Three, three.
Two and three quarters.
Yes.
Three, three quarters.
Chris, let's, can I ask you a question? Let's put this in simple, layman's terms. Mr. Smith owns property here, Mr. Jones, whatever, or Mrs. And let's stick with the one and a quarter acres, and let's say it's unit three, simple math.
Unit three.
So the 1.5 valuation of one and a quarter acres, at that 1.5 number, unit three of your 283.92, it comes up $354.90. So Mr. Smith, if the debt was paid off and he didn't pay, or she didn't pay, they're now gonna be asked to pay $354.90 back.
Correct.
Okay. So now Mr. Smith owned it in 2020, 2021, and sold to Mrs. Jones in 2022. And she's paid her taxes in 2022. And now in 2023, she's being told, oh, by the way, you didn't pay $354.90. Well, didn't Mr. Smith, he gave me a settlement that all taxes were paid up? When in fact, they weren't. How do we explain that to Mrs. Smith, who now is sitting there with a piece of property and asks for $354 when the devil's in the detail? We lost our taxing authority when we closed out the pond, did we not? We lost our ability for assessment.
We did.
We, we told the state that we were not going to, through the tax property office, use that assessment anymore.
So then we really have to figure out how to convince Mrs. Smith, who's now sitting on the property for two years, a year ahead, and she's gotta pay $354.90. Doesn't sound like a lot, but still, it's a principle. So I've gotta figure out how this board's gonna ask 650 people or families.
Mr. Pringle has a thought. Can I talk about your thought?
Give us just a minute. Go ahead, Mr. Pringle. Pull the rabbit out of that.
Yes, sir, pull it out, let's go.
So the, the problem, Mr. Chairman, in this situation is not that you paid off a debt, but rather that when you paid off the debt, I'm not saying you personally, I'm saying the district.
We have a problem here we need to resolve, we're not pointing.
Whoever did, doesn't matter, we just have to solve it.
Yes, sir, the district, the district paid off a debt. And the, at the time that the debt was paid off, the state of Florida was advised that we no longer were gonna collect the assessment to pay off that debt. And so we lost the opportunity to use the tax collector's method of collecting the assessment dollars that were owed for that debt only, just for that loan. By losing that authority of the tax collector to collect the debt for us, we also lost the opportunity of, of the lien being present under the tax bill. As what? So we're gonna have to use a different method. Well, there are two, there are two situations that I've been contemplating and trying to figure out. One was whether the district, by making that decision, whether the district had violated some rule or law by paying off the assessment early and then by notifying the Department, right, the Department of Revenue. My concern was primarily a concern with how the auditor was going to treat the actions on the audit for that year, and whether the auditor was going to say that we violated some rule or requirement. After a number of conversations with the auditor, the determination was made that it was not a technical violation, that you have authority to pay off the assessment. The problem came when you notified the Department of Re, not you, when the district notified the Department of Revenue that the debt was paid, the assessment was not going to be collected any further. The, the, so the first determination, the one that was the scariest for me, was that we were going to have an audit, a problem, a, a management letter comment that we had violated a law or a rule. At this point of time, through a number of conversations with the auditor, we're at the place where we've determined that is not the case. So we're not, we're not gonna go to jail.
We're not in violation, we're not, you're not going to jail.
But I don't see any rabbit ears yet.
I'm getting there.
Then I'll keep quiet a minute while your rabbit ears follow.
So then, so you don't have, under, under the tax collector's rule, you don't have an ability to lien to collect the assessment.
Correct.
There is, under Chapter 298, a provision that says that property, that, that property in the district is subject to the cost of the operation of the district and is subject to a lien in favor of the district for that purpose. So there's technically some ability to, to declare that the district has the ability to lien property. However, the collection of that lien is going to be very difficult, if not impossible, because of the cost relative to the benefit of foreclosing upon a lien to collect the money. In Supervisor Sullis' example, the number was, what, $350?
$3.90, $354.90.
So it would cost more than that in a filing fee to get to court.
Per, per property.
Right, to collect the money. So that's not a, that's not a good remedy to pursue. That's what I would tell you, if you were to ask me, that's what I would tell you. So I'll just go ahead and anticipate that question and tell you. That would not be a good remedy to pursue. So what is a good cost-effective remedy to pursue? And that, what, what I came up with was, you are already doing a letter to the landowners, the annual letter to the landowners. This Chris is already putting together the information on the assessments as a part of that annual landowners meeting. It, it talks about that. And then, and then with your tax role, with your assessment role that goes to the tax collector's office as well. So she'll have the information, most of it, not 100%, but, but much of the information she will already have in those other efforts.
Don't diminish the effort.
No, it's a substantial effort. But, but it's an effort that, that we, you know, a, a part of it is effort that you have to do anyway in your annual meetings.
Basically, we're gonna send them out a notice in, in the annual letter that says.
I can add. I can add.
Mistake made, and we're going to ask for their forgiveness and ask them to send us a check. And if they all do what they're supposed to do, because it, it was money owed anyway, it was a, it was a mistake that was made, we're going to have to ask them if they would please send in that difference. The problem we have in the long run that I see is that that money came out of somebody else's pocket. So if, if we don't correct it in some fashion, how, how do we deal with that?
It's, it's not, it's all, once the district collects the revenue, especially in the maintenance column, the maintenance revenue assessment, that is district revenue that technically the district can use for whatever district purpose the Board of Supervisors says to use it for. So again, and that's part of the discussion the auditor and I had about whether there was some violation of law or rule or regulation, and the answer is technically no, sir. Because you used district reserve revenue that was otherwise district revenue that could be used for any purpose by the, as determined by the Board of Supervisors. So, so that part is technically you're okay. The question is, as I see it, is really, since you gave away the ability to use the tax collector as your collector of your assessments, when you sent the letter to the Department of Revenue saying we're not collecting this phase two assessment anymore, what's the best way to try to collect the money that's the most cost efficient? The concept is, that, that I came up with was include a separate letter in the annual landowners letter, include a separate letter to the landowners that owe this phase two assessment only, current landowners, and say, here's what happened. It was paid off, um, um, to everybody's benefit, especially yours. Um, but you should, to be fair to everyone else in the district, pay X number of dollars is the balance of the phase two assessment that is attributed to your property. Please pay it.
Chris, Chris, have we done an assessment of who's benefiting from this versus who's not? In other words, if there's 650 landowners back there, 700, how many basically are getting a, a benefit out of this from after 2021 versus ones or not?
I'm going to say off the top of my head, I think it's about 600 tax, taxing, about 600.
600 of the six, 700. 600 of the 700 people that should have been paying, got the benefit? But ma'am, are you saying like 80% of the people that should have paid have gotten the benefit without, because the previous board made that decision to pay?
I think so, something like that. We have to go back between a while to look at that.
If I don't want to pay that $354.90 or whatever it was you said I owe.
Well, I did that with each three years.
Well, per, per, per lot, per acre. Okay, say I don't want to pay it. What are you going to do to me if I don't want to pay it?
Basically, like the attorney said earlier.
You're not going to give up to me. You can't follow stealing on my property.
Chasing that money is not profitable to anybody. It would cost us more to collect it. It's sort of like when the United States government sends you a check for $3 and it costs them more to produce it. We're not going to do that. At least this, at least this, this board is not going to do that.
Well, I know the former board is the one that made the mistake. That I know.
They breached their fiduciary duty, quite frankly.
I know. But if I don't want to pay it, even though you send me a letter thinking, hey, Ms., Ms. Smith, you ought to be.
He did refer your name, didn't he?
Yes, he did. So anyway.
Was it essential?
So if I don't want to pay it, even though you send me a letter, there's nothing you can do to me. You can't follow. So why are you going to send me a letter when I don't want to pay it?
Well, I think some people will pay it. I think if you present it the way you just spoke about it, that we, they know they owe it, and it was a benefit that.
But I was told I didn't owe it, but not by you guys.
No, 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 that's not technically correct. No, 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 no. We just didn't, by, by.
They were said the note was paid.
No, no, by say, no, no, ma'am, actually, by, the problem was not the decision to pay off early. That was not the problem. That was okay.
Okay.
The decision, and I'm, and I don't, I can't remember it being a board decision, but a decision was made, it was not by anybody here
No.
to notify the Department of Revenue and tell the Department of Revenue that this, the loan had been paid and the phase two assessment would no longer be collected through the tax collector. That was the problem. It wasn't the payoff. Because you, the district could have paid off the note
And so.
and still have collected the phase two assessment to pay off that balance as of the date of the payoff.
They could have done that through the county, had they done it properly.
Here's, here's a question, and I just thought of this now. If we find out who made that, if you transfer that information to the taxing authority, and in fact was a previous accounting firm that gave that recommendation.
It wasn't a previous accounting.
Why shouldn't they have to pay?
As I say, they.
It wasn't an accounting firm.
Okay, so the question to you, Mr. Pringle, that no one has been notified that it was paid off. No, no, like, I have not been notified it was paid off, so I think I still owe the money.
Well, I was notified.
But I didn't pay off my taxes.
I was notified by the former board that it was paid off.
And, but, but not your assessment? Were you told that your assessment was paid off or that the loan was paid off?
The loan was paid off.
There's the difference.
Yes, I understand.
There's the difference. And so, Mr. Chairman, so technically, under chapter 298, and that language that, well, that language that I just made reference to, that there's still, there's still a lien on the property that the board could pursue. But what I'm saying is, having the lien and foreclosing upon the lien, there are two different decisions the board has to make. And the decision to foreclose upon the lien would involve a cost that may be prohibitive from pursuing. So everything up till the decision of making, uh, uh, the decision of the board to proceed with foreclosure is a different decision. And, and so the board could decide to send a letter as a first step, not waive any rights, lien rights or anything else that, that the district has to collect the phase two assessment, but rather to say, here's, here's the method that we're going to use now to collect this assessment. The method we're going to use to collect the assessment is, we're asking you to send in your money. We've not, we're not waiving lien rights. Uh, this is what, this is the method we're going to use to collect this assessment. You'll also be getting your tax bill on the, on the phase one assessment and also on the general maintenance assessment. This is separate. That's the way the letter would go. And, and, and Ms. Chris reminded me that one of the other things that I'd said before, and I think it was actually Ms. Chris's idea, was instead of having the full amount of the 300 and something thousand, uh, dollars in your example, Supervisor Salucci, we could say that number, but we could also say we're going to make the effort to collect the money over four years, pay whatever. If the board wants to do that, that would be an option as well. But right now, the suggestion is, or, or the recommendation to you is, let me write a letter to the, to the parcel owners that, uh, that owe the phase two assessment to say, and I won't put numbers in, but says, you owe, please pay.
I think let's keep it simple to begin with. Let's go with the objective of putting the letter in the annual packet and see what happens after that. That's the most economical and reasonable way to go, to address that and see how many people in good faith respond to it.
And, and you're not waiving, my point is, don't waive, we will not be waiving any rights by doing that. The board will not be waiving any rights.
The next meeting was the annual meeting, you will have a house full. You've got to make sure it's full.
Yeah, I have a question.
I'm telling you, they'll be there.
Okay, question on, on.
Did I tell you I was on vacation that meeting?
I'm on vacation, so I won't be back.
Is there actually an existing lien, though, on the properties?
No.
That weren't, you know, just because the overall.
For the current phase assessment, there are.
Okay. But I just wondered whether there's an existing lien as they sell the property that, that would get paid off the three, $300 or whatever the amount would be.
Ms. Chairman, if I may.
Where did the money come from originally to pay this off? Where did you get the money?
From the previous assessments paid by whoever owned the land.
Right. So if the money was paid in by the property owners, was there money to use to pay off the loan, so you guys screwed up?
Can I? No, that's not true.
If I had a loan, I'd have to pay it out, I'd pay it out.
Hey, Steve, 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 that's actually not a true statement that we screwed up. We weren't on the board at the time, but.
The board screwed up.
We have, we have owned that, we have owned that objective to begin with. And we said we weren't going to point fingers at one person or the other. It was a mistake that was made by somebody. We're trying to reasonably correct it.
I'm not trying to place blame at anybody who was saying the money was paid by me and these people sitting in the school.
And by me.
You took it, well, you, you took it and paid the loan off. He paid the money in.
And we're, all, all that's being said is that everybody should continue to pay their equal amount. If people don't choose to do that, right now the board is not making any. I know you're trying to figure out where the money came from to pay, pay off that.
For my taxes. It was taken from the wrong account that was put in there by the tax.
That would be, that would be correct, but then that put everybody in the subdivision paying off your loan instead of just you, which the loan was yours.
Let, let me ask a question, Chris, for clarification, help Steve, because I'm going to put this a little more set up around us. The assessment that was paid off earlier than its normal timeframe was for a normal frame, what was it, 20 years, 10 years? What was that first assessment?
It was after.
2020, 2005?
It was still going to mature, I think, in August of 2025.
Okay, so from 2005?
It was after 2005.
Okay, so whatever that timeframe was called, 20 years, so there's 20 years to pay off the assessment. Everyone who owned land was obligated with the, to pay that off because everyone benefits within the community for the improvements that that loan paid for, correct?
Correct.
Sure.
So if it was paid off in year 18, it's in year 20, but you're still getting the benefits of year 19 and 20, that's really the scenario we're coming up with.
But it was property owner's money that was usually paid.
So the property owner's money, hold on a second, the property owner's money would have gone in the assessment for the full 20 years.
Right.
So let's make it simple. In 20 years, you owe $10,000 for your portion to pay that off, and you only paid $9,700. You're still $300 short for paying what you would have been required to pay the full $10,000 in 20 years.
Right, right.
But now the loan's been paid off in year 18, basically, so the whole community still has an obligation to meet their requirements for the 2020. To me, the issue is going to be if in year 18 you sold your property to Mr. Smith, and Mr. Smith's like, I wasn't here for 20 years, I've been here for two years. Now you're asking me to go pay three. That, I can see where someone's going to push back. But if you've been here 20 years, you own that property 20 years, there's two years left?
You have two years.
You really do owe that as principle of being part of the community. I think that's, that's the spirit of what we're asking here, correct?
Correct. Okay, now you're making me feel bad. I want to have.
I'm trying to.
So I, I wanted to put your comments about, we did just buy.
I'm sorry, what?
We just, we did the purchase in the community and the.
Who, well, who are you?
My husband and I, Matt Mary Morrison, Brett, Brett Robin.
Okay, glad to hear.
Thank you. And so I worry less about the dollar amount right now and more about the precedent having signed the contract to purchase the home, that the owner was paying all previous assessments and that I was paying assessments.
Going forward.
Going forward, that, um, again, I'm not worried about the, the dollar amount.
Yeah, we're not talking about a lot.
Yeah, but the precedent moving forward, if the, a new buyer is going to get, um, drone, uh, bill that they thought would have been paid off and then, because that, that to me brings in a issue with the contract, like the rental, I mean, the purchase contract.
For the previous.
It was title company.
Yeah.
I think title company.
I would try the title insurance. You got title of the property, that's about me going there.
No, 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 no.
Well, you can't.
Title insurance.
Title insurance. Title insurance.
This is really good.
Say it, that's what you saw, that's what you saw, Mr. Pringle.
Everything's clear and good.
Yeah.
Well, title insurance, say it.
Let's go back to my guilty story.
You, you did your job.
So there is still an assessment, there is still an assessment.
Against the process.
For the payoff of the phase two.
Correct.
Obligation.
Right.
The only thing that happened between then and now is you're not using the tax collector to collect that assessment.
Sure.
The assessment is still owed, and any property owner who signs an affidavit, seller's affidavit, that says all assessments to this point in time have been paid in full can be a true statement if they have in fact paid. But what that seller's assessment does, seller's affidavit does not say is all future assessments have been prepaid. It doesn't say that, that's not occurred. The assessment is still owed. We're just not using the tax collector to collect it, that's all. The other method of collecting it is to say in a letter, I think, in a letter, all the things that Supervisor Salucci said and that I've said and anybody else may come up with, because the letter doesn't have to be done tonight, to send out to the people who still have the assessment on their property. Here's the assessment amount. If you want to pay it off in full, here's an amount. If you want to pay it off over four years or however many, here's an amount. And write a check, and then at the, and then later on, the board will be able to decide, okay, what are we going to do with the people who haven't paid? And then that, and then that's a board decision. Uh, there, again, my point that I've said two or three or 20 times is the board is not waiving any right, has not waived any right that it has under chapter 298 to collect assessments that are due, or the lien that is placed under, by chapter 298 on property.
Okay, let me ask you a question. Say, say like you've sold that property, like you said. The people get the letter that they owe because it wasn't paid, because I didn't pay phase two, then they're going to come to me and say, I want you to pay this because you said it was already paid.
No, ma'am, that's not what you say in the seller's affidavit. What you say is all assessments that are currently due have been paid. In fact, normally the contract says that assessments that are due, and there's another word for it, um, at, at the time the contract is signed, will be paid by the seller, but assessments that are to be collected in the future will be paid by the buyer. That's normal contract language. Uh, so, so in this case, those last years of the assessment, a notice requiring payment has not been sent out yet. So that assessment would be due by, would be paid by the buyer, where it's an assessment that is collected over time, over a number of years.
This young man has a question.
Is there any provision to, uh, go back and ask for, um, that was formed, that was filed with the state saying that we no longer have that ability to collect tax, go back and see that was filed in error? Is there a possibility of that at all?
Have you been told now?
I think it's going to go against the covenant, basically.
Well, the, the, the answer we have received so far is no. I haven't, I haven't begged, but in the conversation that I had, because.
Sometimes it's available.
Oh, yes, sir. Oh, yes, sir, absolutely. And, and, but, but again, in, it was not couched as, it was just the, the statement that was made to the Department of Revenue, that's where the, the, the change really happened.
Right, right.
And, and the change that happened was when that letter went to the Department of Revenue that said, we've paid off the phase two debt, uh, we're not, we, we don't need to collect the phase two assessment anymore.
Right. So if you can say that was filed in error, we need to refile that.
Yes, sir. And I, and so far my efforts have not been successful with that. The Department of Revenue essentially says, um, you can still collect your money. You just can't use the tax collector's bill. That's the great part about using the tax collector's bill is when we put it on the tax collector's bill, you have to pay it or, or the tax collector will issue that tax certificate on your property and then interest accrues and all kinds of things can happen. And we don't have to do anything, any, make any effort to collect that bill.
Why don't we go back and ask him if there's some provision that they can do that? He said, that seems like that's a real issue.
It is. That, that's the, that is the problem. And so far, they said, no, but I mean, I can ask again if that's the desire. Sure, I, I can ask again.
Well, he asked in 2022 and they were adamant.
So we would have up to 40 years to pay that second assessment off to the board. The money would go to the board, not to Lake County.
Correct.
Got it.
Yes, ma'am. It would, it would be a direct collection by the district.
Can I ask, Richard, is that actually a lien against each and every property? Or was it a blanket lien?
Again, yes, it is a.
Oh, lineups.
No. It is a lien under chapter 298. Chapter 298 says that for improvements to, to the district, it constitutes a lien against the property.
But would it show up on a title search news? All you're going to ask that is for no other reason as they sell properties off.
The interesting thing about me sending a letter is when I send a letter to all the property owners in the phase two assessment category, and the letter says, you owe money. And we are not waiving any of our rights to collect the money, but we would greatly appreciate it if you would just voluntarily pay it off so that we don't have to do anything to collect it or take any other action. That would be best. Then they're on notice. And so then they have a problem after that. If they sign a normal seller's affidavit that says no assessments are due, if my letter says an assessment is due, they've got a problem. That's part of the reason of sending the letter.
So who's going to pay for the 635-year actions with all of our title insurance companies? Because that's where I'm going. So, and if you submitted this lien back to the county, that's where we go. Because you're going around the county and saving some money to make this cost effective, you're going to bill us directly. I can't, you think I can't go to my title insurance company? Even if I don't win, you're going to deal with 600 attorneys. So who's going to, who's going to pay the district's attorneys?
You're, the, the title insurance.
You are.
No, so the title insurance companies are, are going to say that the years of the assessment remaining, that the seller's affidavit didn't have to apply to that, and that was a buyer's responsibility.
Please don't give me legal advice from my side. This is my side, right?
Then don't ask me a legal question. If you don't want me to give you a legal answer.
Okay, I, I'd like to make a motion that obviously we're not going to solve this tonight, but I do believe that we're on the path of some process or methodology of how to get the information out to the landowners. So my motion is to work with Chris and Richard to come up with the guilty letter that we make people feel guilty and get it out and review for the, the board to review. But I do think, Chris, there has to be simple mathematics of explaining because.
Yes.
I'm very good at finance and I'm like, what?
All right, so I gave you, the reason I.
I don't think you did the three reviews. We just need to make it simple.
No, and the simple one is.
It was 20 years for the bond to be paid off. The previous board made a decision paid off in year 18. There's two years left based on the assessment. All landowners, da, 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 da. Exception could be new owners. We're not sure what that is. But how many of the 700 properties back here are new owners versus, you said it's probably still 600, 650 people?
Well, and could it be that you provide an accounting for my, accounting for my property so that I can see the timeline? That would be helpful to me, that I can see where the, the owing.
But all properties would be the same timeline. If we issued the bond in 2005, supposed to be completed 2025, it was paid off in 2021.
As far as what the previous owner paid toward that? So because you're saying some of them, some of them did and some of them didn't pay off.
Right. Some of them paid.
Yeah, some paid it.
But, but the ones who paid it off won't get a letter at all. So everybody who still owes, still owes proportionate shares, proportionate amounts.
I paid my man full.
The, the goal would be to send a letter. The, the goal would be to send a letter that had the parcel, the specifics for that parcel included in the letter.
But I do believe the letter to all homeowners should be the generic scenario would occur. Here's the facts. Your property is this.
Right.
And then when people see like $280, okay. Some people are just going to pay it. Some people are going to go spend $2,800 for a lawyer to fight $280.
Right.
And that's their prerogative.
Okay, so I think.
So that's my motion. Do I hear a second?
Wait a minute, first, I think, wait a minute, stop.
No.
The first decision, I think the first decision is, A, that you are going to pursue the collection of this unpaid CIP. That's the first decision. Is that not the first?
No, no.
I think the first decision is, does the district want to send a letter?
Yes.
As the first step of that process.
A guilty letter.
Yeah.
Send a letter.
Like a little baby crying saying, give me some.
John, you're making, you're making the motion to send a letter.
Wait, so what's the financial impact?
Okay, so motion.
You know, David, if you don't want to pay yours, I guess you won't pay it. But that's what you're saying. And, and the financial impact to everybody is going to be exactly the same. We're not.
Financial impact to the district, you just.
To write a letter?
No. Well, yeah.
Write a letter and if you feel guilty, pay it. Like, I'm going to pay.
If you don't, then I guess you won't pay it.
Well, but don't say that. You know that.
Okay, let me say this to you.
So if you wanted to be a charity base, come hat in hand and.
This is not a charity case. The people who know they owe the money know they owe the money. We're not asking you for extra money.
Most people are going to the right.
What I will, what I will say to you is I'm an optimist about things like that for most people. And when I worked for the Beach Fire Department, we used to send Alice and the realtor to people for, who used our ambulance service because we didn't have the ability to let them use their insurance because we were a fire department, not a county ambulance service. So 90% of the people or 80% sent checks.
I asked a question and you didn't answer.
Hammer down.
Story about the fire department.
Jim, did you second that motion?
Yes, stop.
I seconded it, yes, ma'am. So yes, David, one more time. If you want to say something, please go ahead.
Ask, what is the financial impact of the district? Because you just let this go and we don't collect any of that.
Mr. Chairman, I have that answer. 172,000.
$786.17. And if you think about it, if Chris is right, about 600, 700 properties here need to really help pay this back in. And it's an average $250 to $300. 600 times 380, $180,000. So some people are like 260 assessment, some are going to be 350, some are going to be 180, depending on their acreage and where they are, unit one, two, or three.
I didn't know we had a phase three.
No, but there's some.
There's a phase. Unit one, two, and three. Are you, do you, are you from Stripe?
I think saying lot, lot one.
Oh, oh, oh.
Lot one, lot two, yeah.
Okay, fair enough, Jim.
People of Stripe have the highest assessments.
Hammer down.
Okay, we're moving on.
Okay.
Guilty letter coming up.
We're going to make it really good. Website streamline. I've done all the assessment. I interviewed the company out in California. I'm impressed with what they can do. We've got over 1,000 municipalities already that have their websites hosted by them. They focus on governmental entities and they have some water districts already. Most of them are on the West Coast, but they're obviously branching out here on the East Coast. So with the initial transfer cost of $250 and the monthly assessment of $80, I recommend that we go with them, transfer our website, it'll take approximately two weeks. This is where I'm going to ask Audrey if you want to help, because I can do it as well. But I do believe the manager, myself, Ron and I'd like to hear some input too. Once they transfer over, it's going to be in a, what we call sandbox testing environment. So they'll create the whole new website. All our information is going to be moved over. It's going to go in the cloud on the web. Then we can edit. They're going to give us the tools to edit it. We should say this. So we're going to, and then while we're editing it, it's not published. Once we're done all the editing, everyone reviews it. I think the Supreme will should review it as well, make sure it just has all the right language in there. Then they publish it. It goes live, I think they said, within 24, 48 hours. And then I'm also going to make a recommendation to the board that we, I forget the, they haven't got back the exact dollar amount, but it's not much per month, and obtain, because the auditor suggested this as well, not just have a separate, a better website, but then we also get government emails and stop using our private emails. Okay? And that will be a fee. So yourname.gov. I actually think because we own the website, we could actually have it at skewed.gov. So we, our website name will be, so Audrey@skewed.gov. And in the future, other people who join the board, because obviously I don't think Jim and I are going to be here forever. So they'll be able to get their own emails.
John?
Yes. That's my recommendation.
Through EarthLink, excuse me. We have a domain name of S-C-E-W-C-D.org. It may be worthwhile seeing if that domain name can be transferred over.
Yeah, we can ask them. Until we fill out a form, Jim's got to sign it. And then I bring it here. It's basically a two-page form. Once we fill it out, then the board gets it. They'll start the process, taking our website, moving it over. And we'll fill it out now, take it and review it later. But I just want the board to make that consideration. So that's my motion to, yes, go to streamline, switch over, get a much more professional website, and also recommend.
Is your motion on the floor?
Yes, and, and part of that motion is also get government emails.
Okay, I'm going to second the motion. Motion passes.
Can, as part of that, can I go ahead and publish the annual meeting page? And then that way, when they do the transition, that page will be published along with the rest of it.
Current website will get transferred over. So put as much on now as you can. But they're not going to start this until they get a check or credit card or whatever we're doing.
Right, right, right. So I, I'll just update it and then I'll publish it and that way I get migrated.
Okay, moving on. Thank you. And thank you for the work you put into that, John.
Yes, amazing.
That's, this is, this is going to be a big asset to the City Water District. And for the years to come, and to all the people who use it, so.
Good luck getting the word out.
Okay. Game report, John.
I have, I printed out a thing from one of the residents here on the Rocky Road red signs that they said that they anchored the sign with the help of neighbors to make it more stable. I'm back to what I said the last meeting. At some point, I believe, whether it's Rocky Road or some of these other roads, we eventually should put the funding in to standardize all gates and all the galvanized steel railing for all these perimeter roads and all these areas that we only want access to the district, the equipment that's necessary, fire trucks, things like that. Now, this particular one, Rocky Road, it's around, I think I did the numbers around $2,000, $2,500 per 12-foot six section of the galvanized fixed railing. We do one on each side, and then we can have a chain across the middle. If people need to access it, we can open it up. The manager now can open that key for like a fire truck. And if there's people down those roads that it's private land, they want to start building, then we open up for them to go in and out. Whether we want to make that decision now or see if funds come in with FEMA, I don't know. It's an emergency.
We, we do have a little extra money this year. I would support that. The only thing that I would change on it is that I, in, in our, going around the neighborhood recently, there are areas with practically brand-new fencing of this kind of material that we would need. It's no longer in use, that those areas are blocked and it's actually running parallel with the fence. So I think we can remove those and put them in those locations.
Well, what we could do is the one company that had done this before, I talked to them, they could sell us used stuff. I don't know, you sell, come down and take that, and it's the used stuff, and go over there and we pay for the labor.
Either way.
Yeah, I just, as long as we own it. So maybe we need to identify those ones that we would move as well as we need to bring in one or two used sections and say, can you schedule to do it? So that's my motion is that.
I second it and we'll move forward with that. And do we have a cap on a dollar sign for that? $6,000?
Well, it's around $1,250. I would say cap it $6,000 for down, see how many gates we can, I think that's the materials and the labor.
May I ask, just to put in, on, on Rocky Road, and I was talking to Chris earlier about that. And I guess someone's going to, starting the process of building a house down, our problem's going to go away once that guy does that. Because the road's going to get extended and the issue that we're having with, with the gentleman is going to disappear.
But are there other roads? Some of the, need to build roads and the others we should consider these fixed curramires?
I don't know if we're having any other issues.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we standardize.
I'll tell you what, we're going to pack, we're going to put this on the floor. We pass it. John's going to be in charge of it. Work with him on it.
Yeah. And let's see where we need standardization.
Okay.
Say, Ron, well, well, we need to go to Venice Springs for permitting requests.
We need to go to Venice Springs for permitting if we're going to do this, yes.
Road extensions, will that be permitted?
No, 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 gates.
Yes. So the gates.
The gates.
I think so.
We did in the past.
We'll give them.
Yeah, well, I'll talk to Stuart, ask the question.
So when you get a chance, go back to the report I did with all the photographs and see if there are any areas that I'm missing that you think there should be some standard. And Mike also give you some info on that.
Sure.
Maybe only you can do one or two right now. And we have two or three extras. So then we have to work something out with the, the company that could do this and say, look, we have the used stuff here. Do you want to take it off from here and go over there? And maybe we can use a discount.
Okay, passed and done. So let's move forward. Mike, you work with John. John has the authority to do whatever action he needs.
So we're going to leave the gates there? We're just going to standardize size and all the same size?
Right now, we're not referring to the current gates. We're referring to.
And new ones.
A couple of places like Rocky Road, which is in the end of Amarillo or whichever the roads are. Okay, that's all. Okay, budget resolution. To, to correct the fiscal year of 9/30/23 carryforward balance. Yes, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I have a resolution this evening to adjust or amend your 2022 slash 2023 budget, this year's budget. We have to do this every year. When the auditor completes the audit, they give the district the actual cash carryforward budget balance from the last fiscal year, in our case, 2021, 2022, into the current fiscal year, 2022, 2023. When you establish your budget initially, you use an estimate. The estimate that was used in your budget for the cash carryforward was $1,037,130. The actual cash carryforward balance, as determined by the auditor, was $1,037,679 for a difference, an increase of $549. That is very, very close. That is very, very accurate. That is very, very surprising that you were that close. This is actually the second year you've been that close. So that's really good for your budgeting process. But the resolution.
We pulled the rabbit out of the stuff.
Yes, sir. Somebody did. And so the budget resolution, or excuse me, the resolution is to amend the budget to increase the budgeted amount of $1,037,130 for the fiscal year beginning fund balance carried forward from last year to the accurate, actual amount, cash carryforward amount of a million thirty-seven thousand six hundred and seventy-nine dollars, which reflects an increase in the balance forward budget line item in the amount of five hundred and forty-nine dollars. So that the amended balance forward budget line item is now a total of a million thirty-seven thousand six hundred and seventy-nine dollars. There's the resolution, I've said it two or three or four or five times, just so everybody knows the difference, the change.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to.
Approve the resolution.
To put a motion on the floor to approve the resolution of budget.
From twenty-twenty-two.
From twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three, yes.
I second it, motion carries. Employee job descriptions, the, the attorney will be working on those this month. He will pass them out to the, uh, board members during the course of the month, and we will talk about them at the next meeting.
What's that?
The job descriptions for the manager and the secretary treasurer will be handled by the attorney this month. He will pass them out during the course of the month to the board members to look at, be approved at the next board meeting.
Right, so it's just a motion to continue that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
So we need a motion?
Yes, so you need a motion.
To continue the, uh, job description.
Item.
Work.
Okay, I second that, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item, uh, office setup for the new manager. What exactly are we talking about here? We buy an office someplace?
Just a, just a laptop and a printer, pretty basic.
Do we have any, do we have any numbers on that?
We don't, not yet, I do apologize.
Do you have a general idea of what maybe that stuff costs? And I do know enough about these things that we don't wanna buy the cheapest ones, so.
Yeah, if we were to do the scanner, um, there was one on sale for like a thousand dollars. It's a bit too, too eighty-seven something. The printer, I told Audrey that she should get a laser jet printer, because it would be more cost-effective to generalize in terms of the ink versus an inkjet printer, that they just eat up the ink terribly. Um, that would probably be.
I say you just share.
Five or six hundred dollars.
Anytime of night she wants to use it, never mind. Uh, go ahead.
A laptop, I don't know what kind of laptop she's looking at to know what that might be, but probably fifteen hundred, uh, for the laptop.
So we're looking at about twenty-five hundred to three thousand dollars for a setup with some small supplies to go with it.
And then we need the, we need three file cabinets, and they were two sixty-nine each for a four-door file cabinet. So there's another seven hundred dollars.
Can I make a recommendation?
Yes, please.
First of all, how much work are you gonna be doing that you're physically at a desk versus the need to go out and inspect and look at things? Fifty-fifty?
Sure.
So, I would consider a laptop that folds in half, becomes a tablet, so you can pull up files when you're looking at the photos or.
Job sites.
Job sites, engineering report, uh, or get a tablet and a basic laptop, and move your files back and forth. Now, you get a laptop that folds in half, those things are not cheap, and if you break it, you break the whole thing. You get a, a tablet, and it has the information in there, you look at it, you can always end up uploading it again back to your, your laptop, 'cause you're not a hundred percent desk work.
Correct.
You're field work.
Correct.
So you need something to question permits, FEMA's asking if you wanna be able to pull, and you can't have, can't do it all on your phone. So you need, so my recommendation is do a little research. And now, are you Android or App?
Apple.
Apple, so then I would look at an Apple tablet, because then at least your files will go back and forth.
And that, that brings up a good point, should she have, should the district, should she be using a district phone and not her own personal phone?
Yes.
I would.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah. And once we get these emails, you're gonna have a district email.
Yes.
Like all of us.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
John, I think she's gonna need internet access if she's got enough.
Yeah, we'll have to do, if we're gonna do the phone, I recommend that we do the, um, SIM card for the tablet as well, so we can actually go on the internet. It's not that costly per month. And that should be a, a board, that should be a, a district property. So if any of us need to go use that tablet, we go use it. If you're not able to go somewhere, one of us has to go out.
Got you.
Okay?
If you get a higher, a higher, uh, ability phone, you can use that as a hotspot.
Yeah, but you could put the, you put the, the SIM chip ability in the, the, um, Apple. The tablet is just the same. You could act as the same phone number for the phone that goes to the tablet, I know for a fact.
And then we'll be transferring the phone to her house location.
Yeah, for the bill.
Well, for the service, the landline that we have.
Do we have a landline?
We have a landline, that's the four-nine-five-four-six.
Why isn't that landline going to a cloud-based service, and anybody can access it for voicemail? Why does that have to be physically a landline? Could be voice over IP.
You can have, you can have whatever you want.
Well, do some investigation of that, first assign as manager, 'cause it's an average ten dollars a month for a VoIP number. If you already have the number, you can transfer that over. Let's say, you know what, I'll ask Streamline, they have a hosting service, like GoDaddy does, okay?
Can you fax on those?
You don't, you have to get a separate fax line.
Yeah, and that's the whole problem, if you don't have a landline, is, is certain places, you still have to fax.
But you can get a fax service that then comes into the cloud, and you just pick it up right up your phone.
Oh, okay.
And you're not wasting so much paper.
I gave a butt in my head.
What's this?
You're a way of a man, are you?
Sure, we can grant you.
Yeah, frankly, no.
Okay.
Okay.
Some of that, if you want.
So I think, I think the cost has gone considerably higher than your three thousand, so.
Budget three thousand, and let's see. Cause I know there's.
Your laptop's gonna be that.
No, it's not.
We'll find some.
No, it's not.
We'll find a deal.
Okay, so make the motion.
I make a motion to budget thirty-five hundred dollars for equipment now, okay? And if we need more, we'll come back.
You didn't talk to me about that.
Also, yeah, motion carries. Cause Chris, the laptop doesn't have to be an Apple.
Yeah, no, no, no. I wouldn't, yeah, I'd do that.
If you have a problem with that, just solicit.
So, Mr. Chairman, as part of the motion, who did you authorize to make the expenditure? Is this something that?
Andre.
Okay, that, so the manager has authority up to thirty-five hundred dollars to acquire a laptop. Uh, what, the equipment that was referenced earlier, up to thirty-five hundred bucks?
Yes.
Thirty-five hundred, okay. So that's what the motion would be.
If she has any problems with that, she can call the board members and get their opinion during the course of the. Okay, moving forward.
Did you, and, and there was a second to the motion, and it passed, okay? Just for the record, just to keep it clean.
Uh, let's see.
Sale of surplus equipment.
Sale of surplus equipment. We've discussed that.
We did.
Were you going to develop some means, or how do we go about doing that?
Yes, sir, well, the statute, you've got two documents that have some governance over you. First, you got the statute, uh, statutes, there's one in particular, chapter two seventy-four, that says that if it's a capital I item, that you're gonna dispose of it under a certain method. Then you've got your board manual that has a description of what constitutes capital asset. Anything over five thousand dollars is considered a capital asset, if I remember correctly.
Is that the value of it at the time you're selling it, or the time you bought it?
Under the statute, it's the value at the time you're selling it. Most of the items are depreciated down, so that what you, what you really need to do, Mr. Chairman, is have an inventory of the items that you're discussing that you want to dispose of.
Okay, this is, this is relatively easy, we've got only a couple items that we own, a couple items we want to try to dispose of, which is the excess old gates we took down, putting them on a government-authorized website.
And you can do that, and if they are under, um, under, uh, a value of five thousand dollars apiece today, then you can essentially dispose of them in the form and method that's in the best interest of the district. Uh, so making phone calls are okay, uh, donating them to another government agency is okay, donating them to a charity is okay, determining that they are scrap and sending them to the scrapyard is okay. If their value on a, on a single basis is today five thou, less than five thousand dollars, then you have a lot of flexibility as to how you can dispose of.
Every item, we're talking about less than five thousand.
Okay, so the first step would be to deter, to declare them a surplus property of the district and no longer need it. And then the second step would be to say, dispose of them using the, or, and tell somebody in particular, dispose of them, uh, using, uh, the most reasonable method, and if that, and that up to and including, uh, scrapping them, selling them for scrap metal price.
I would like to put a motion on the board tonight to dispose of them, but I would like to not put a price on them. I would like to put them on this government website, let the market determine what they're worth, and if we get an offer on them, they go away.
Okay, to use like a GovDeals.
It's called GovDeals.com, and we'll just sell them on that website, and whether we get a dollar or five thousand dollars for them, we won't know that until we put them out there.
Okay, do you know the items, the inventory items that you wanna declare surplus?
I will get that, I don't know, I'm just gonna tell you that certain, the old gates we took down are what we're talking about, and we only owned two of them.
So there were two gates, okay, all right.
Two electronic gates, and we would like to dispose of both of those items.
Okay.
I would like to also bundle into that, not in the same sale, but as a second sale, any surplus signs that we may have had been destroyed, signs from the hurricane that we're, have accumulated, that we want to try to get rid of.
Okay. All right.
Sometimes either people buy them for the aluminum, or people buy them because they wanna put them on in their man cages or whatever, so.
Okay, so the motion would be to declare surplus property the two da, gates that were damaged by the storm.
Correct.
And to also declare surplus property any and all signage, uh, throughout the district that was also damaged or, or is no longer being used by the district.
Correct.
It's signs of poles, all right? It's just not.
I don't think we had any straight poles after the hurricane.
But that's what you wanna dis, that, but that's what you wanna dispose of?
Right.
Signage would be.
Signs of poles.
I second the motion. Motion carries.
All right, so the second motion would be to dispose of all of those items just declared as surplus.
Correct.
Using the GovDeals, uh, method.
Correct.
Okay, that would be a motion.
So you need, you need another one.
So you need a second motion, yes.
Second government, second motion to, to, for the government.
Yes, to dispose of the surplus items through GovDeals.
I make a motion to use government webs, surplus website. I second that. Motion carries.
You're done.
And then you'll send me an inventory?
You gotta come get it.
Does that need to be?
You'll start with your pay.
Be attached to the minutes?
Yes. Yes, we need a list of the items.
While we are speaking of this, and we are down at the very end of the list this evening, and, uh, we do, we're doing pretty good on time, but we do need to remember that.
You did have one item that you added, Mr. Chairman, to the agenda.
Yes.
Transfer of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to.
Put that in my bank account.
The Florida Prime Bank account. Mr. Chairman, not as though the motion would be to put it in Florida. My district bank account. Okay.
I'm not gonna pay that assessment.
If I get that, don't worry about it.
I, I need to tell you too, the gate at the end of Deep Drive, going west, the padlock's gone. Don't know where it went, somebody took it off and threw it away.
DeRota's?
I put, I put, yeah, I put a wire tie on that the other day when I was going around the subdivision.
Cause he looked for the padlock, couldn't find it.
I said it going to Rotis or going to Claire?
Going to Rotis.
That one's always been.
Can we have extra padlocks? Usually they leave it open and reap the padlock there, it'll close it.
What, what we are going to do, I've already told Mike to pursue picking up a couple additional locks, checking through you on that.
Uh, I, I ordered five, I'll have them tomorrow.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that when we order locks, that they have numbers big enough that they can be seen. When any emergency service has to be out there at two o'clock in the morning trying to unlock a gate, they're gonna do it one or two ways, they're gonna either take a set of bolt cutters, which then they usually cut the chain, but with all due respect, uh, if you're gonna be there, even I have a problem seeing some of those numbers, some of the lines on them that don't line up with the numbers, but line up with a different bar. I'd like to see the, a little bit of.
Standardization.
Standardization of these locks as we move forward, and, and that's it. There's no need to.
I have been buying the same lock, the, the same locks recently.
Well, there's a dozen different ones out there right now.
I know there are, there are, but let me show you what I got, so, so you know.
I sort of like the wire ties, 'cause I can just break them, but.
So can I.
I'm glad, had a nice trip.
You just had to put it back.
In fact, that, that one had one of these locks, if I'm not mistaken, so I'm kinda surprised that they were able to cut it.
They don't cut the locks usually, but sometimes they do.
Wrong was they, uh, but, Mr. Chairman, we also, someone notify Venice Springs Utility and let them know that.
We're gonna do that.
A lock has been hacked.
Did you cut their chain? They're looking for you already.
I'd rather admit more than deny anything about anybody's chain. You're pulling somebody's chain.
That's true.
Wouldn't agree with it.
The numbers.
That, that, that would be fine.
That's good to the very bottom, I think.
There are some, we have a couple of them out there, it's got nice big numbers on them. I hope that's, those are them, I can't tell by the pictures, but it looks like it'd be good, okay?
And it has a cover to it, so.
And Mike's also been told to go around and lubricate all of the locks, so. All right, um, we need to move forward with the motion to.
Transfer a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to, from your reserves into Florida Prime.
Motion's on the floor.
A motion that we move a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to the prime account.
I'll second that, motion carries. Now, I wanna just add one item to the end of the line, and it really has to do with surplus equipment. More food for thought than anything, no action necessary tonight. We have also government agencies out there, yes, ma'am?
You're, you're bypassing public input, if you're, if you're doing supervisor comments.
We'll get to that, he's not there.
Yes, it's normal, son.
No, he's talking.
Go ahead.
Thank you. We have government agencies out there, but consideration is going to have to always be used when you make decisions such as this, that they will give us certain items for free if we have a need for them, and such as, I'm gonna just use hypothetically a golf cart. Now, here's, here's my thing, with any time you accept anything for free, it's never free if you have to maintain it and take care of it. So if it comes with a cost to the district, then I'm not even gonna put a motion on the floor. But my thought process in speaking with them is that we can own it, but then transfer it to the person who might need to use it, meaning that if our manager, our secretary treasurer, our engineer, or even board members had a need to go out and, and survey areas around the neighborhood, and they gave us these items that if the attorney thought there was a way to make this happen, whereas he could come up with a contract that would say, if we let these people have that item, they become responsible for it, have to insure it, and have to maintain it, and turn it back into us at the end of the term. So if that kind of thing can't be worked out, then I, I personally would not promote a cost to this district in any way for items like that.
Scratching his hip now.
You can think about it for a month if you would like to. Okay. Then you're gonna really be short some more here, but anyway. Okay, uh, public input, three-minute limit, anybody have anything they would like to say?
Yeah, I've got something.
Yes, sir.
Um, Anita Bill.
Name?
There's John Kengus.
Thank you.
Some of us knew who you were, but we needed it for the record.
Right, um, Anita Bill, uh, just past Rocky, uh, on the left-hand side, there's a storage lot for construction equipment, and it appears that they've dumped a lot of debris and garbage on our road.
That's, that's become an issue, and that's something we're contending to deal with. And they've also run down the swell on the edges, which is allowing the mitigation of water to run right over the edge into the canal system.
And there's, and there's also a box drain on their side of the fence that can be full of debris, that somebody's gonna have to pay to clean up. I necessarily do not wanna pay that many money to clean up their crap.
Well, I agree with you, and I don't either. So we're actually in the process right now. As of the other day, I was down there, I saw what we're talking about. The engineer was down the same road, he saw what we're talking about, he's currently beginning to work on that. And we'll have conversation with the owners and see what they will do. And at that point, we'll pursue the county or the city of Benita Springs Code Enforcement. And we will, as far as the roads go, we're gonna have to determine what action we can take there. It's again, one of those situations where the use of an unimproved road has not been permitted in the past, and that's what's taking place over there.
Okay, so isn't, isn't their district still agricultural and residential, not storage?
Well, on the private properties, you have as much right as this board does to call up code enforcement and file a complaint.
Okay, I'm just checking to make sure that that's still statute, that we're agricultural and residential.
As a board.
Not commercial.
As a board, our, our job is the
Women's the swell.
Correct, not private property.
Correct. But if that drain is on that property and they've blocked us on
Then maybe their gate's in the wrong place. Their fence they put up might be in the wrong place.
Right, but our, our.
I didn't know there was a, I usually keep track of those, and I didn't realize there was one on the other side of that fence.
All right, so now, uh, on Stillwell, I don't know whose home it is, but they must've did a Lenai or something like this. On the north end of Stillwell, on the right side, uh, they left a pile of crap in, in the swell.
Okay, we'll take, we'll, we will be down there and take a look at that.
And this is your rainy season, you know, and this has got to
We agree with you one hundred percent. I, I personally appreciate you telling us that.
And this is what all the district groups, members need to do is strike, just bring these issues to the board tree, so that we can say, delegate out to who, who can forsake it.
Do you have an address for the Stillwell property?
I do not. It's probably three-quarters of the way to Benita Bill on your left-hand side.
It'll be, it'll be.
More so.
I'll go look for it.
Yes, I will.
Yeah, it's on the north end of Stillwell.
Yeah. Thank you.
On the right side, you can't, you can't miss it. I mean, it's a
Is it on the left or the right?
On the right side, heading north.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Donald was saying too, as you come out of Rotis to Strick Lane, and you're trying to look to the east, there's a tree right there, or there's a cabbage tree or something there, and you can't see the road, see past that tree unless you're out in Strick Lane almost.
Is the tree in the swell or on the private property?
It's in our right of way.
It's in our right of way.
It is in our right of way, I would say for sure.
So really, it's a drain.
It's in Strick.
You come outside and try to look towards the railroad track.
Is it toward the railroad track?
No.
Okay.
West, west of Rotis?
West side, west side.
So it's inside the fence.
We suggest you get a higher-profile vehicle. Yeah, put monster tires in there.
So I got one more thing.
Sure.
And on Lucy, there's a boat that's parked on the side of the road in the swell. Well, yeah, and it's been there a month and a half.
We're waiting to raise these problems.
Well, that's what I'm thinking of, but in a way, sure. Something's got to
Is it in the swell?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was down Lu, I was down Lucy a couple days ago, and I don't
Oh, did you miss it?
I don't know, but I will look.
You can't, heading, heading, heading south, it's on your right-hand side, and you can't miss it.
Okay.
The binnies half-way open, I, I don't know if it's an abandoned boat, I think it's right by your house.
Yeah, the guy's from Fort Mary's Beach, he lost his house, and everything, so he's keeping the boat in front of the neighbors.
We, we can't keep it in the swell.
My boat's on.
I, I know, I know, I
I think about it every time I pull out.
We just had three trailers get pulled in on a lot next to us, and people parked them behind the house and thought they were gonna be able to keep them. But it's code enforcement issue, and again, monitoring these kinds of things. The guy said Fort Mary's Beach people didn't have someplace to live, so he thought he'd give them a place to park them, but he didn't have sewage or water, and so they're going away, so. John, do you want a non-paid, non-gratis type job to look into the neighborhood, cause you're finding great stuff?
No, I just, not as a tight I just do, I go out on my golf cart and, and having fun, but, um, my concern, I used to be on that board, and I know that the concern of that board is the roads.
You know September's
And the ditches. No. No. It, it is something that we have to watch out for.
Absolutely.
We all pay a lot of money.
You know, this is our neighborhood, and we all, we all should care about, and that's the point.
And I heard you saying about cutting, um, the red peppers haven't been cut out of the swell. That's gotta be done before rainy season.
Well.
We're just asking for trouble if we don't.
There's none of them that are obscuring the water flows or anything, but the point being is there's no sense in stealing from Peter to pay Paul and then falling short by three-quarters of a percent for doing other projects. So if we take and spend that money on those, but instead of being able to spend twenty-five thousand dollars, we lose seventy-five thousand because we can't get a grant, because we don't have the matching money, it's sort of foolish to go out and trim some trees that are not absolutely necessary at the moment, and that's why I brought that up. If you're seeing some things like that, we are aware of them, we will correct any things that obstruct water flow. Mr. Edith Field's not gonna let that go by us. It's just not gonna, in some cases, have the pretty look that we had, that we may have had and want to enjoy out here, okay? So we're trying to spend the money legitimately and make it go as far as it can and stretch it. So that's the only reason I brought that up. There's none of them that are actually obstructing water flow or anything, or they will get taken care of.
I need to look at Mountain View.
How long do we have to money match what they're putting up? How many years? A year, six months? Do we have to money match?
We've got different programs we're putting in applications for. I would say the best guess scenario, most of those will come true within a year.
Okay.
But the other ones, uh, might come sooner. Right now, most of it is things you're gonna see in the next budget year for the counties and the government agencies. So the money, there are other grant monies have been spent. We're tagging on to the last, the end of the last years, and we're trying to put in money for the upcoming year. But if we don't have matching money to put up against the money we can give, then we can't get that money. And then at some point, at some point, the taxpayers out there are gonna have to put up money to clean those earnings. We just got a bid in recently, uh, at the tune of a hun, I believe it was around, and just hypothetically number, around a hundred and forty thousand dollars to clean three roads, the ditch system. And if we took that number and multiplied it towards the twenty-five we have, then okay, so you can see what the cost could get to. So we're looking to multiply that money toward other projects.
Okay, so are we gonna do ditch cleaning before rainy season?
Are we going, we will take care of the things we need to take care of. We're not going to do the thorough cleaning that we have done. Now, I'm one board member, the other board member's gonna overrule me on that. I'm telling you what I believe we should do.
Okay, so that has not been decided, then? Okay, is there any meeting that that would be decided on?
It'll be talked about probably the next meetings along the way until we decide, as we go around and see what needs to be done. And this again, if you see something you believe needs to be critically taken care of, like, uh, didn't you say there was a place on Lucy or?
Boat on the whale on Lucy.
There's a boat on Lucy and a, and debris pile on Stillwell.
But what are we talking about? You were talking about trimming the trees.
Mountain View.
At Mountain View.
Okay. We'll take a look at Mountain View and see what it looks like.
Yeah, be on the east side of the road.
Okay.
Near Strick.
Steve. Excuse me, Steve, we can't hear you.
When you remove the vegetation from the canal, do you have to treat the stumps with herbicide?
That is not part of the FEMA project, I don't believe.
What would it cost to do that? Actually, you're gonna have to keep going and cut the same tree every year.
The FEMA project didn't include vegetation removal, that's a, that's part of the HMVP project that was moved forward. Uh, FEMA project was to remove the setup of wash stands as a result of the E M, and place that material back, dispose of that material, and then rebuild the burrow with new material. That was, that was a FEMA aspect. The HMVP was a canal maintenance, canal cleaning effort. And presumably with that effort, most of the vegetation in the bottom of the canal will go with the cleaning. So herbicide wouldn't need to be applied.
I have one last thought.
Yes.
If all of us, oh, the money for phase two was paid, we would have enough money left to do these projects. Okay, you've guilty me of.
So that's three hundred and some dollars, make sure you send us a check.
Okay. All business concluded, I'm gonna put a motion on the floor to
And you call, so Mr. Chairman, you call for public input, there's no more public input. Supervisor comments are the last thing that are left. If there are no more of those, then you can adjourn. I, I, I'm not aware of anything else.
Okay, I put a motion on the floor to adjourn.
Second the move.
Meeting's adjourned.